So you are free to begin the meeting this evening.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Southfield Planning Commission regular meeting for August 26, 2020, conducted via teleconference. At this time, like to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper?
Here.
Uh, Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Present.
Mr. Griffith?
I'm here.
Mr. Huntington?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Martin?
Present.
Ms. Mia?
Present.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Go ahead, Commissioner Culpepper.
Go ahead.
I so move that we approve the agenda as written.
Commissioner Huntington, support.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, supported by Commissioner Huntington. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mia?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Okay, sir, your approval, your agenda's been approved for the evening.
Are there any announcements or communications?
Uh, nothing.
This is Planner Crowe. I, I just want to acknowledge and welcome Ms. Stevens Gunn to the Planning Commission, and I wanted to give her a minute or two if she wanted to make any brief remarks before we move on to our next item. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'd just like to say hello to everyone, to let everyone know that I'm excited about this opportunity. I'm excited to learn a lot more about what the Planting Department does and to be a part of this group. So thank you very much and forward to progress.
So again, um, besides going mute, um, ask everyone to turn their sound down on the computer. That's where we're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first item is a public hearing. It's PSLU 20-0010.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get here to the PowerPoint. So your first item on your agenda is, it's actually two items, special land use and site plan. Um, the special land use is PSLU 20-0001, uh, and the site plan PSP 20-0008. Uh, the site plan or the special use portion, uh, is for, uh, the existing Great Lakes Water Authority site. This is the West Service Center, which is just north of Eight Mile Road, uh, on the east side of East Street. So it is between Eight Mile and Chiawasi. Uh, it is an existing facility. It's been there for some time. Uh, currently, there are two reservoirs on the property located, uh, along or closer to the east property line, uh, along with a pump house that's along the south side. And what the proposal is, uh, this evening from Great Lakes Water Authority, uh, is to actually construct some brand-new reservoirs and a brand-new pump station, and then demolish the existing reservoirs and pump station. So a little closer look at the existing facility. Current zoning of the property is a single-family residential, and single-family residential is part of the future land use plan as well. Uh, there is also just a small sliver of parking on the south side of the property adjacent to the industrial zone. So it's an image of the existing conditions. Uh, you can see the, uh, existing reservoirs quite a distance behind those existing trees, and then the pump house is not really visible because of the outbuilding that, uh, is closer to East Street. Again, the proposal is to construct two brand-new reservoirs, twenty-seven and a half feet tall. Um, each reservoir will hold about five million gallons of water. Uh, they would also install a brand-new, uh, pump house. Once these facilities have been reestablished and, and running, then the existing, um, reservoirs and pump house will then be removed. This is a multi-year project, and I'll let the petitioner kind of explain the, uh, the series of events, uh, when they get their opportunity. Uh, but this is something that is going to take a number of years to, to actually install and get going. This is an aerial photo, um, showing kind of an overlay of where the reservoirs and the new pump house will be. Uh, as you can see, they're able to construct both the reservoirs and the pump house, uh, in front of the existing facility. Then we have some images, some bird's-eye views of what the new facility would look like from various angles. East, uh, west and north elevations. Pump house elevations. Um, at our meeting, uh, earlier this month, we did discuss, uh, new security fencing, uh, that would go along East Street. Um, the, the fencing that's been proposed, and this is going to be fencing that will extend from the north property line, south to where the existing gate is, uh, that, that covers the existing road. The fence that you see on the screen right now is, is the fence that will be installed there. Uh, it is an anti-climb fence. The, the balance of the fence from the, uh, existing rolling gate then to the south property line, uh, would then be, uh, black vinyl coated chain link, and we'll allow them then to have the, uh, barbed wire on top of that. Now, keep in mind, barbed wire is not permitted within this particular zoning district, so they would have to seek a waiver for the, uh, barbed wire. It is an existing condition out there, uh, right now. However, it's, it's not legal and it's not conforming. So they, again, they would have to seek waivers for, uh, any barbed wire that will be installed either on the proposed new fencing, uh, or the existing fencing on the north, on the east, and on the south side. And, uh, with that, um, we can open it up to any questions. Um, I will state that, and you will, you'll note it in, um, our resolution, in our planner's recommendation, uh, there was a discussion that we had with regard to the art requirement. Um, the, uh, Southfield Arts Commission did meet last week, uh, on Tuesday, the eighteenth. They did agree, um, to accept, uh, the painting, uh, of the proposed, um, reservoirs as a part of their art requirement. Uh, they did, however, state that they, because it's kind of in a concept right now, they did at least want the opportunity, uh, to have final say on the final colors, uh, once that was finally determined by Great Lakes Water Authority. I will also note one other item with regard to overall height of the reservoirs. Um, the height in, um, the particular zoning district, the maximum height is twenty-five feet. The, the structures are shown at twenty-seven and a half feet at the middle of the reservoir. Uh, however, there is a stipulation within the zoning ordinance, um, that states that public buildings can be upwards of fifty-five feet in height. So therefore, there's no waiver for the, the additional two and a half feet, uh, that's being proposed for these reservoirs, because the ordinance does allow a public building to go up to fifty-five feet as long as they meet the setback requirements, which they do. Um, with that, that concludes staff's, um, comments, and I do know that Dennis Tinkler and, and his team are, are online to, uh, give some further information and then answer any questions.
Dennis, did you have anything to add to the explanation?
Thank, thank you. This is, uh, Jim Miller. I'm the project manager for the, this, this project for Cozing Industrial, and I think Jeff did a pretty good job of explaining the project. Can, actual construction will not start until the spring of 2021, and will take approximately two years to complete. Uh, that's probably about all I have to add, unless there are any questions.
Okay, this is a, this is a public hearing. Um, do we have any public call-in, Jeff, at this time?
Um, there are none that I'm aware of. However, as you know, um, we do at least want to wait a couple of minutes because of the, the timeframe between, uh, this particular portion of the meeting and then what's being shown on cable. Uh, I will, for the sake of the public, um, there's a, a number, a call-in number and an event number, uh, for you to call in on, uh, should you have any, uh, comments on this particular item. Uh, the phone number, one four one five six five five zero 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 one. Then you enter the event code, one seven three seven six nine three two seven seven, and then pound, pound, and then you will then be able to be recognized and, um, ask your questions, should you have any. I do know that I have someone on the attendee list. I don't know if that person, uh, is someone who would like to speak, or whether or not that is someone who's currently part of this particular meeting. So again, if there's someone currently on the line, uh, feel free to, uh, say your name and your address for the record, and then make your comments. And again, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't appear that that particular attendee, uh, has any comments. However, we still want to wait at least another minute or so, uh, to give the public the opportunity to call in. So I will let you know when that additional minute is up.
Okay, thank you.
Through the Chair, through the Chair, this is Planner Crowe. Uh, Mr. Miller, could you, um, while we're waiting for, um, potential public, could you just talk about, um, the service area that this water, um, provides and just remind us of how many gallons of water there is?
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Um, the existing facility has two reservoirs that, that hold ten million gallons of finished water each. Um, these reservoirs are simply supplemental to the system, uh, which this feeds most of Southeast Michigan, or, yeah, Southeast Michigan. So this is a, this is a key element, um, between the water plant at Spring Wells and the system to ensure that there's a, there's an ample volume of water, uh, to supply the system. Uh, the new reservoirs will be five million gallons each. And the reason for that is... Pardon me?
No, it's, I would just, you were breaking up. I just wanted to reiterate, five million gallons each for the new reservoirs, and you have two million gallons each at the existing reservoirs, correct?
No, there's ten million gallons each at the existing reservoirs.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's, that, go ahead.
The rea, the reason for this downsizing is Great Lakes Water Authority is in the process of a rightsizing their system. Uh, because of the decrease in population in Southeast Michigan, their, their system is, is very much oversized. So now they're trying to become more efficient and update their facilities.
And how many people approximately does this system serve?
I really, I couldn't answer that question. I'm sorry. Um...
Um, it, I just wanted to really, um, point out that this serves more than just the City of Southfield, and if you're saying Southeast Michigan, and I think we have approximately three-point-two million people in Southeast Michigan, I was just curious, how, how many of those does this, do these reservoirs going to serve?
I really, I really can't answer that.
Yeah, if I can, if I can chime in here, this is Andrew Juergens with GLWA. Um, this site specifically typically pumps west, um, on our system along Eight Mile. Um, so the ser, the service area of this, these specific reservoirs would not be serving the entirety of Southeast Michigan. Um, they're mainly used to boost our suction pressures during high demand times. Um, so this, this stored water here, um, isn't, the, the function of it isn't to, um, provide, you know, a full day's water to a, a specific population, rather just to ensure that our pressures in the system are supplemented during peak hours.
All right, thank you. I just, um, I think that would be helpful when you get to council, that someone can just give a little bit of a background and overview of why these are important. Thank you.
If I may, through the Chair, uh, we have no one wishing to speak, uh, as part of the public hearing on this.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time and open it up to the Commission for questions or clarifications.
Yeah, through the Chair, Commissioner Huntington?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how many people would be employed at the new location?
Go ahead, Andrew.
So this is, uh, Andrew Juergens again. Um, so this, this site is typically unmanned. Um, you know, there's usually a traveling operator that's on-site from GLWA, um, at a specific time, but, um, it's not a fully manned station. Usually, it's operated remotely.
Okay. Okay, and that's, uh, well, I'll take it twenty-four hours a day, so, uh, but nobody's on-site like twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, usually, so it, it, it depends on the operator's schedule. Um, usually not twenty-four hours a day, but, um, typically there is somebody there or somebody that can be there at that hour.
Okay. And what are the typical issues that, uh, come up with this type of operation?
Well, hopefully, with the new facility, there will be very few issues that come up with this type of operation. Tip, typically, it's the normal operation and maintenance, um, of, of the large pumps and valves that control the flow, um, and the maintenance of the grounds. Now, mind you, the pump station that we're proposing to build here is, is a pump station that just services the suction side of the existing pump house. It's still shown in the, in that picture, and the existing pump house is what's used to boost the pressure, maintain the pressure in the system.
Okay, I got you. Okay, thank you.
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Go ahead.
Uh, just a few questions. Uh, so since the building is not maintained, the, uh, you parking spaces you have there, they're just for those, I guess, for that operator who will come in to use it, right? It's not for anybody else?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, first of all, I, uh, I like the style of the building, and I definitely know that it's needed, and, uh, good thing that you guys updated it. Uh, Dennis mentioned that this won't start to 2021, so can we assume that there will be nothing done on this site until, I mean, I guess you'll come back and let us know, that there will be no activity done on this site until 2021? Is, is that my understanding?
That's not a hundred percent accurate. We will be doing investigative, um, excavation on-site beginning this fall, just to determine the exact locations of existing facilities, uh, because we have to have that information for our planning to order the proper materials.
Understand. So there will be some excav, do we have a timeline for when excavation's going to start in that area?
It's, right now, it's scheduled for about the first part of October, but it's, that's not etched in stone either.
Right, no problem. Uh, uh, my concern was, you know, when they start some type of activity like that, we, uh, the mission just need to know so the planning department also can know, so the neighbors in their surrounding area will be aware of what's coming, coming. We just don't want any surprises. Uh, again, I like the, I like the aesthetics of it. Uh, the fence looks good. Uh, so, uh, again, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I, as I mentioned last time, um, I know you got to go to the, uh, zoning board for that, uh, barbed wire, but, uh, I, my stance is that that is a residential area, and I know barbed wire has been there for some time, and that's been a non-conformant, but I just don't think barbed wire has a good look in a residential area. But again, uh, you have to secure that building in some way, so we'll see what comes out of the, uh, zoning board, but, uh, I just, uh, don't like the barbed wire that gives off a bad taste in a residential area. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. To the Chair, Commissioner Martin. Go ahead.
What is the source of the water that is, that's, uh, used in the facility, in the reservoir?
Yeah, so these, this is Andrew Juergens. These, um, these reservoirs are, receive their water from Spring Wells Water Treatment Plant in Dearborn, and they're filled, uh, you know, during off-peak hours in the afternoon.
What is the construction of the reservoir portion itself where the water's stored?
The, uh, the construction of the tanks themselves are, are what they call pre-stressed concrete tanks. Uh, I won't get real technical, but they're, they're, they're basically, uh, concrete panels that are, that are wound with high-tension wire and then, um, covered with gunite or concrete, um, to secure the wires. It's pretty, it's a pretty typical application around the country for water storage reservoirs.
Okay.
There's a number of them in the Detroit area.
Okay. Excuse me. Um, I'm aware of the height, and we've gone over that a couple of times, and at the last meeting, I asked about the, the diameter. Can you refresh my memory on what the diameter of the tanks is?
These tanks are, yeah, these, these tanks are approximately, well, they're just a little under two-hundred foot in diameter.
Okay. And... That was all. Thank you.
Okay.
Through the Chair?
Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Mia. Uh, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Culpepper. Uh, this, this project is aesthetically pleasing, uh, for the City of Southfield. Uh, I do like the pictured fence, black fence. Uh, I have a question. Is, is that typical to have, uh, barbed wire fencing with this type of project? I know that's not on the books right now. Is that something that's typical for this kind of project in other areas to have barbed wire?
Andrew, you want to speak to that? Yeah, so GLWA, um, there are standard security system around our water facilities is a, uh, is a barbed wire. Um, so we do have that at most of their, of our facilities.
Do they expect people to come over that fence for whatever reason, the reason why they wanted to put the barbed wire up there?
Yeah.
Had any problems with facilities before?
I don't know that we've had specific problems, um, that I recall, but it's, it was within, within our designation as critical infrastructure and in consultation with the, um, Department of Homeland Security and our critical infrastructure managers' recommendations. Um, that was the standard that we settled on, was the barbed wire.
Okay.
We just felt that we need to protect our, uh, infrastructure.
Thank you.
So, the, plus this Planner Crowe through the Chair, just to piggyback, um, we, um, we understanding and knowledge the security issues, and there is existing barbed wire there now. Uh, I think we compromised and they were willing to agree to put this, uh, anti-climb fencing, which is a lot more decorative, at least along East Street, north, um, to south to their driveway, which is, uh, across the street from basically the residence, and then go with a black vinyl coated chain link fence for the rest of East Street. So at least, uh, the right-of-way will be cleaned up, and they'll still meet their security guidelines, and as Mr. Spence said, they still will need to receive a waiver, but we didn't think it was practical, uh, if they are granted the waiver, to have them remove it from the, uh, remaining portions of their property that's not fronting on the street. So that was the compromise that we are in favor of, but again, ultimately it'll be the zoning board of, you know, final decision.
Any other comments or questions for the Commission? All right. If, uh, there's no further comments, or we're prepared for a recommendation?
Yes, I'm ready, sir.
Um, I would move for favorable recommendation of PSLU 20-0010.
Yeah, if, if I may, through the Chair, to, to Mr. Willis, um, I would at least like, yeah, let me make the re, the recommendation first, Mr. Willis, and, and then, uh, we can go ahead and have a recommendation, uh, or a, a motion in a second. Um, so the planning department does recommend favorable recommendation of a special use request of Cozing Industrial on behalf of the owner, Great Lakes Water Authority, to construct two new water reservoirs and pump station and demolish the existing reservoirs and water station, property located 20920 East Street, Civil Parcels 2413452006, and 2431452-031, for the following reasons and conditions. The subject's approval of PSP 20-0008, site plan review by the city council. Submitted special use with the conditions recommended by the planning department and planning commission will be of such size and character that will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the R1 single-family zoning district. The location, size, intensity, peers of operation, and the proposed use is designed to eliminate any possible nuisance likely to emanate therefrom, which might be adverse to the occupants of any nearby permitted use. Proposed use is in accord with the spirit and purpose of the chapter and is not inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives sought to be accomplished by this chapter and the principles of sound planning. Proposed uses of such character vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or adjacent thoroughfares. Proposed uses of such character and intensity and arranged on the site, thus to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, fumes. Proposed use will not be adverse to the... Proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And the proposed use is designed and operated so as to provide security and safety to employees and the general public. And that concludes Planning's report for the special land use.
Okay, and uh, Commissioner Willis did make a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
Through the Chair, I'd like to second Commissioner Mia.
Okay, we have the, we have the motion by Commissioner Willis, second by Commissioner Mia. Uh, we have a roll call vote, please. This is the, the first item, the PSLU twenty dash zero zero one zero, I believe.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Martin? I'll move on to Ms. Mia.
Affirmative.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
And I'll go back to Mr. Martin. And it appears maybe we may have uh, lost Mr. Martin here. Um, regardless, um, you do have a um, approval for PSLU twenty dash zero zero one.
Okay, now we have the site plan portion of this project. We have a motion.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I could read the, the recommendation if you're ready for that.
Yes, please.
My question, I, I do have one question with regard to the site. And this is Commissioner Rob Willis. But, okay, one of the things I have to focus, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, can you hear me already? Hello?
Will you repeat that, Mr. Willis? We didn't hear you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Willis.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I have a question uh, about the site since we're going to uh, that point. One of the things I've noticed is this is an extremely large piece of property in a neighborhood. Uh, I think it's well-kept, grass is cut, but it seems that some other use could be made of this extremely large piece of property in the neighborhood. Um, you know, it could be a water element that would bring in neighbors. It could be a stone structure, a walkway. And, and I know it hasn't generally been discussed this way, but it seems like we would miss an opportunity to utilize a large space in a neighborhood. Not sure what kind of amenities they have. I think we can almost count two birds with one stone if it's something we could consider.
I'm sorry, Mr. Willis, was there a, a particular question there? You broke up a little bit, so I, it wasn't quite clear.
And, and I get, I'm, I'm asking if we could consider looking at it, uh, this large piece of property also being utilized by the neighbor, uh, neighborhood with a, you know, maybe a walking element or water element, another piece of, um, I don't know, a park, anything that would be able to utilize this large piece of property for the neighborhood. I, I, you know, it just seems like it would be a great opportunity. And to grass it over again seems to be kind of a waste to me.
May I speak to that a bit?
If I may through, y- yes, please.
Yeah, please.
If you notice on the site plan that was shown to you earlier, a large portion of that grassed area, which doesn't show in the rendering that you're seeing now, uh, will be used for detention area for stormwater. If you see the large kidney-shaped area. And then there's a, a four-bay section of that detention basin uh, that's required by, by the county um, for any solids to settle out prior to going to the Rouge River. You also notice on that plan that there's a possible future five million gallon reservoir shown adjacent to, or to the, to the east of the new reservoirs.
Okay.
And it is, in addition to that, there's, there's potentially plans to build a new high, high lifter, high-service pump station um, just to the south of that detention basin. So there are plans for that in the future. When in the future that would happen, I don't know. As to, as to other uses for that property, that would be completely up to the owner, Great Lakes Water Authority.
Okay. Okay. I get to that. I just didn't want it to sit there as grass again for the next thirty years, you know? Well, thank you so much.
Sure.
Uh, any other questions or comments on the site plan portion? Believe we'd be ready for the Planning Department recommendation then?
All right, thank you, sir. With regard to uh, the site plan PSP twenty dash zero 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 eight, uh, the Planning Department recommends favorable consideration of the site plan review request of Kokosing Industrial, Inc., on behalf of the owner, Great Lakes Water Authority, to construct two new water reservoirs of five million gallons each in a pump building, and demolish the existing reservoirs and pump station property located two zero nine two zero East Street, Sedwell Parcels two four three one four five two zero zero six, and two four three one five two dash zero three one for the following reasons and conditions. Approval of PSLU twenty dash zero zero one zero by the City Council. Receipt of the following waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Waiver of the fence height, six feet required, eight feet proposed. Waiver to allow the use of barbed wire in the residential and the parking district. Landscaping must be installed in accordance with the approved landscape plan prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy unless the season of the year does not permit installation. In that instance, a bond must be submitted to the billing department, cover the cost of the installation and temporary certificate of occupancy shall be given. On completion of landscaping and approval of the same by the Planning Department, the bond will be returned and the final certificate of occupancy shall be given. Fencing around the site shall be as follows. Along East Street frontage, waterworks, anti-climb fencing as proposed by Great Lakes Water Authority from the north property line to the sliding gate on the north side of the driveway entrance. The sliding gate and the balance of the fencing to the south property line shall be black vinyl coated chain link with barbed wire on top. Barbed wire is subject to waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The existing fencing along the north, south, and west sides of the site shall remain as is. Any barbed wire is subject to a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties. Photometric lighting plan shall be submitted for review by the Planning Department prior to the site and going to the City Council. Petitioners pro- provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Petitioners execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas, both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes the maintenance of any stormwater detention system. Petitioners implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Buildings shall be constructed in accordance with elevations shown on Sheets SP six through SP eleven. Approval of this site plan and or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the billing department for any proposed sign. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article Four, Section five point two nine, Paragraph twelve. The site shall be designed and developed to contain public works of art in accordance with Section five point two two dash five, Public Art, Article Four, General Requirements of the Zoning Ordinance. The exterior painting of the reservoirs as shown in the concept on the elevations will serve to meet the art requirement as approved by the Southfield Arts Commission on August eighteenth, twenty twenty. Southfield Arts Commission retains the right to approve the final reservoir and pump station colors at a future meeting when Great Lakes Water Authority has made its final determination on color. And with that, that concludes Staff's Report.
To the Chair. This is Ms. Mia. I, I, uh, I'd like to make the motion that we accept uh, PSP two zero dash zero 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 eight site plan uh, as per the Planning Department's recommendation.
Commissioner Culpepper support?
Okay, we have a favorable motion by Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Culpepper. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mia?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you do have a um, positive uh, vote for the approval of SP twenty dash zero 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 eight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item listed was PSP twenty dash zero zero nine, zero zero nine.
Yeah, if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, um, just wanted to thank um, the petitioner, um, Dennis, Jim, and, and your uh, staff, your, your team for, for bringing this before us. Um, wanna let you know that we're in the process now of trying to get you on the City Council meeting. Uh, so I will be following up with you in the next day or so, uh, to let you know. And I think that would come before the Council at a study meeting and then ultimately the regular meeting in September. And with that, you guys are free to go.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the, the Board's approval.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much. See you later.
And Mr. Chairman, with regard to PSP twenty dash zero 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 nine, uh, if you recall, uh, at our meeting earlier this month, uh, the petitioner had not submitted uh, his revised plans uh, for his proposal. Um, we have had conversations with them over the last few days or so. Uh, they will be submitting their plans uh, by September fourth uh, for a reorientation of the proposed deck. Uh, so what I'd like to recommend this evening uh, would be that we postpone uh, PSP twenty dash zero 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 nine to a date certain. That'd be your September twenty-third, twenty twenty regular meeting. And you would need a motion and a second on that.
To the Chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Go ahead.
I move that we postpone PSP two zero dash zero 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 nine to a date certain, which is September twenty-third meeting.
To the Chair.
Support, uh, Ms. Huntington.
We had someone coming in before you, Mr. Huntington. Who was that?
It was me, Commissioner Mia. To the Chair, I want to second the motion.
Okay, we'll, we'll go with the motion by Commissioner Culpepper and also supported by Commissioner Mia this time. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mia?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you do have a, a motion and a approval uh, to postpone PSP twenty dash zero 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 nine to the September twenty-third, twenty twenty regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes.
To the Chair, Commissioner Martin?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the July eighth, twenty twenty study meeting and the July twenty-second, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes.
To the Chair, support, Commissioner Huntington?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Huntington. The uh, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Ms. Mia?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, you have approval for your minutes this evening.
Okay, next uh, public comment section. Uh, do we have anybody already called in?
Yeah, um, I will see if we have any here. Um, I still have one caller that's shown uh, under the attendee list. Um, but uh, prior, before I ask them whether or not they have anything to say, um, just to the public currently watching or listening. Uh, again, the, the number for a public comment uh, is the same as it was for the public hearing earlier. Uh, you can call one four one five six five five zero 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 one. Uh, then when you're prompted, uh, we have an event number. You can plug that in of one seven three seven six nine three two seven seven, followed by pound, pound. And then that will get you into the meeting and then I could recognize you uh, as you call in. Um, with that, uh, again, we will kind of wait a couple of minutes to see if we have people call in. Uh, but again, I do have one person on the attendee list. So uh, if there's someone who would like to make any public comment at this time, you can feel free to give your name and address for the record and go ahead with your comment.
Through the Chair, this is Planner Crowe. Um, this is to Planner Spence. The uh, a regular meeting agenda that I'm looking at says public comment, call-in number is the two four eight seven nine six four one five zero. So I think we have to honor both, both call-in numbers.
Oh, that, that's perfect, yeah, that's perfectly fine. Yeah, one of the reasons why I did put the number up here on the screen under public comment was so that it would be right there in front of people. Um, but you were right in that if people do wanna call in on the four one five zero number, that we will accept that as well. And, Mr. Chairman, we have uh, no one willing to speak during public comment.
Okay, close the public comment section at this time. Any miscellaneous business?
Carrie, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Um, with regard to um, your September agenda, as I noted earlier, we do have um, the, the one-site plan for the north property on Northwestern Highway, uh, that will be coming back before you. Again, I, the plan is not to get me any plans for that though until the Sept- until September fourth. Uh, your first meeting this month is actually on September second, uh, which means I, I don't have any items for you at this time for the September second meeting. Uh, and there's a possibility that uh, I won't be ready for the September ninth meeting either. So I can tell you for sure that September second, uh, we'll be seeking to, to cancel that meeting. And there's a potential that we might cancel the September ninth meeting. Uh, would, would just leave us two meetings for September on the sixteenth and the twenty-third. Uh, there are some items that are out there that we're waiting to, to come in. Um, so we would at least like to, to keep that sixteenth date open, uh, not only to start our discussion on master plan, um, but also further discussion on the site plan that got um, postponed this evening and the potential for another. this evening and the potential for another item.
That works for me.
Work, works for me. This is Commissioner Culpepper, works for me.
Okay, any, any last comments or questions from any of the commission?
To the chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Go ahead.
I have one question and one statement. Um, at the, uh, two weeks ago, at the city council meeting, the question was asked, uh, why wasn't Dr. Denson reappointed? And, um, there was no answer given. So let me say, uh, and this is no disrespect to Dr. Gunn at all, it's not meant in disrespect, but I just want to say I will miss Dr. Denson, uh, personal, from us, though. Saying that, next question is to Mr. Crowe. Carrie, will the commission get a chance to see that presentation which was put on Monday at the city council, the Center of Northland? I thought that was an excellent presentation and beautiful. Will we get a chance to see that?
Yes, um, through the chair, you will be making a recommendation on that, so at the appropriate time, uh, this will come before you. Now, given the, given the time crunch, there is a possibility that we may have a joint, uh, meeting, uh, with the planning commission and the city council, but, uh, we will be following our, our normal procedures where you will be making a recommendation and then, um, the council will be acting on it. But, um, instead of having it spread out over two months, it's possible that we would have a joint meeting, but you definitely will be seeing that in, in the coming months.
Okay, thank you. That was a great presentation, I loved it, and I know our chairman would definitely love to see what they plan to do with it. See, I know you're loving, but, but, okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Carrie.
Uh, this is Commissioner, uh, Rob Willis. I do have a, a comment, um, and, and again, to acknowledge Dr. Denson was not reappointed, I wanted to acknowledge, um, that I thought she was a great person to work with and we were going to miss her. Uh, but I also want to take the opportunity to welcome Dr. Gunn, and so we are hardworking commission, there's always a lot of work to do, and so we look forward to spending a lot of time working with you, so welcome aboard and thank you for accepting the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis.
Um, is there any update on when we may, I know it changes by the month, but when we may get back together in person or, or perhaps get more of us on, on the video call here? Looks like we're, uh, a little bit light on technology.
Yeah, through the chair, um, the late, the last executive order allowed teleconferencing during the term of the state of emergency. So as long as there's a state of emergency, we will, will most likely be, uh, continuing to conduct these, um, type of video teleconferences. In the, in the early stages, there was a date certain, and that kept getting extended, and then the last, um, executive order dealing with this was, as long as there's a state of emergency, um, we can continue operating this way.
Okay. Anybody else, any final comments? All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.